Good afternoon, everyone. Yes, it is. Is your mic on? I'd like to call the Clackamas Community College Board Work Session in order today. Today is Wednesday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and it's around six thirty-one. Six thirty-eight P. M. Sorry. Our first order of business is our budget and financial forecasting. First, I want to thank our presence of Mr. Michael Moore for attending tonight. And we are so happy that you are here. Thank you. For our budget meeting, I want to turn this over to Vice President Jeff Schaefer and Business Officer Dean Christie Owen.
Great, thank you. Once we get the presentation up on the screen, I will get us kicked off. But good evening, Board. Thank you for having us for a forecast up and budget update. All right. Okay. Vice President Jeff Schaefer. And get started. So the topics we're going to talk to you about this evening are forecasts. So we're going to give an update of the forecasts that's happened since our last spring. We're going to talk about the impacts from the state economic forecast that's come out. We're going to update the forecast with those assumptions, new assumptions that are now built into the model. And then we will provide some scenarios for how we're going to balance that updated forecast. And then I will turn it over to Christie, and she will go through the budget direction and what's coming up next with our budget process. All right. So forecast overview and the headlines. Essentially, when we last left you in May and June, we did our Budget Committee and adopted budget. We had proposed $235 million of ongoing budget reductions. We did still leave a $650,000 structural piece that was out there. You might recall, we were calling it a glide path at the time. So that was some work we were going to work on this academic year to try to resolve those to address by the end of this year, by June of 2026. As you know, every year, every fall, we bring you this forecast update, and we actually use this as a tool to help keep you informed of the budget and the forecast and get things prepped for the upcoming budget process. And we do it twice a year, once in fall to get ourselves kicked off for the year, once in spring to make those adjustments that have happened and balance the budget, too. We, the revenue and expenses assumptions include any of the, for the fall, are including any information that we've received from our audit, plus any new information that's happened since. This time of year, it's usually things like property tax levy, enrollment updates from the prior year and such. And then the headline for this one, we had a state economic forecast updated that was pretty dramatic, and it is creating some federal impacts or having domino effects to the state, which are now having domino effects to the Clackamas Community College budget. All right, so update from spring. So if we go roll forward from spring, that $650,000 is now actually up to 1.1 million. So it's actually gone and increased. And unfortunately, sometimes it's a bit like, I've used the analogy on Monopoly board, sometimes you have some ups and sometimes you have some downs. Unfortunately, in this case, there was a lot, we hit a lot of those, paid the rent a lot of times around the board this time. So as you can see, property tax, I itemized some of these out. Property taxes usually are around four and a half percent growth every year here in the county. This year, our levy was only for 3.5%. So slightly lower property taxes than normal, that just is a piece of the funding. We also have something I won't get into details on. I actually did a presentation at OCCA on this for those who attended. But there's a freeze for FTE enrollment growth that happens with the state funding formula. Generally speaking, it's saying that we've all been growing so much from the pandemic, post-pandemic. It's doing what it's supposed to do. It looks for an abnormal amount of growth and starts freezing the formula and saying, we're not going to give you extra funding for extra growth. So if we're growing 9% and Chomeka is growing 5%, it doesn't give us any more money for that growth. It's frozen, so we still get our same slice of the pie. So that's really what's happening with the state funding. So really, what that just means is we've had more growth. The forecast model sees that growth and wants to give us more funding, but the state has actually frozen that FTE growth. So we aren't getting any extra funding, which impacts our forecast. And enrollment isn't quite as strong as we originally forecasted. I think we had forecasted 10% over two years previously. Now we're at about 9% over the next three. So it's a slightly lower forecast percentage, and it's spread over more time, which just impacts the forecast slightly. And then we had, one thing that does happen with growth is sometimes with additional sections that you're opening, it becomes harder to have that underspending every year. Traditionally, we've been planning for 5% underspending in our expense side. We've been down less than 3% in the last couple of years. So again, with that growth, it becomes harder to have that underspending every year when you're using the same amount of current service level expense. So that then moves forward in our formula, which then impacts forecasts. So those factors, along with other things that we look at, such as material services, impacts to escalations in costs that are happening with our equipment and our supplies out there, software licenses, we incorporate all those changes into the next year's forecast. So and if they're more than what we originally thought, that's where we see an impact. Yeah, Rob.
Question, do you know why the drop in property tax?
I don't. I just got the levy a couple of weeks ago from the tax assessor, and it does it in total for the entire county, which is a massive number. It's just done as one number for all houses in the entire county. It tends to be, there are, sometimes we can go meet with the assessor, but it's kind of hard to get on the schedule. So it takes me a couple of months till I can actually dig into it and have that conversation to tell me if things happened with urban renewal areas or other things that may have impacted it. But there was nothing, nothing that I knew about on my radar that caused that. So it could have just been that houses didn't have that same aggressive growth increases that they'd had in the past for that. Well, the Measure Five, Measure Fifty is the cap, which you can always usually count on. It's really morally, it is really more the growth that happens. Usually, if you're, somebody sells their farm, you know, in Colton and turns it into a complex of six houses, you're collecting more property taxes on that at that point. So that's a lot of reasons why we get more like four and a half percent is we're still in that spot where we're getting more housing developments out here or more of those increases of conversions of property into housing areas. So. All right, so the state revenue forecast. So it's a little bit hard to read, but it's a snippet from the state economic forecast. The key piece here is H R one, known in the media, was called the Big Beautiful Bill, has impacts that hit the state. And a little bit of trivia, does anybody know how many states link their state income tax to the federal? I'll give you the answer, I won't put you on the spot, it's six. So there's only six states in the United States. But actually, don't worry about W-2 income. They actually just say, tell us what you're paying the feds in your 1040 forms, and we're going to use that as your baseline for your income tax that you pay in our state. So what that really means is if the federal government says, we're not going to tax tips, well, and you link yourself to that decision in the federal government, you've now lost millions of dollars of tip revenue on your state income tax projections as a state economist. So this is ultimately what happened here is that bill came out in July after he'd done his forecast, and he started connecting the dots of those federal changes that'll happen on the 1040 forms and the other federal tax forms and started linking them to where our forms, and said, that's an $888 million loss of revenue. So that was the big headline that happened in September, and that's about two and a half percent of the entire $35 billion state budget. So that was a big hit that happened in September. I will provide a small update. I think he published it this morning, the new state economic forecast this morning. And he brought that back 300 million because of corporate income tax collections that happened recently. So that's a hopeful sign for us. We haven't had a chance to see what that means, and we really won't know what it means until the short session. But that would take that $888 million gap that was happening in the budget from the H R one bill and turned it closer to, I think it was 570 is the new gap amount. So it's a little bit smaller, maybe 1.6% of the overall budget that is still out there. But because of that, and additional to that, there's been large impacts that they're projecting from SNAP and Medicaid that aren't part of this forecast. Those are actual impacts that they plan on seeing with that federal legislation. They are asking all community colleges and four years and K-12, they're asking all their different agencies to present 5% reduction scenarios for the upcoming short session. So that is one of the things we're updating and we're modeling as part of this forecast is what does that look like for us with 5% state funding reductions? So if we took our spring forecast and we move it forward from spring to add in those 5% reductions, this is just updating the graph. It gives you a sense of the 2.9, that you see the $3 million deficit off to the bottom right. That's just showing, that's pretty much what that impacted. That 1.1 would become about $3 million deficit. So gives you a sense of scale of the 5 million, or the 5% reductions at the state level. And we still use the other assumptions that we had used last spring in all those numbers. So that's the impacts. One thing we're going to do is we've decided we, we will, so we're going to change our assumptions. It's a historic time, we've not had to change our state budget assumptions for a biennium, mid-biennium like this. So we're going to assume that the worst-case scenario, that we would be asked to disinvest 5% of our state funding from our budget, even though we won't know until spring. But at this point, we're going to start a budget process using that assumption in mind. We also, it's a unique time in that we don't have bargaining agreements into the future years. So they end on June 30th of 2026. So we don't really know what our COLAs will be in the upcoming years. So another assumption we're going to make is that we're just going to start with a baseline assumption of not knowing what the COLAs will be, we'll just start with $0 or 0% COLAs for the upcoming year and then model that with this year's forecast. Although I want to sub-bullet, it's understood that we will still enter into good faith bargaining this spring. So that's the beginning baseline assumptions for what you're going to see is the forecast here. We're also assuming all the other pieces will remain the same, such as step increases, other benefits will remain the same. And then what that looks like, so with that state reduction and a baseline of zero COLA, that, those revised forecast assumptions would create a $1.3 million deficit that is still left. So it's really just to say, even with those assumptions, we have some work to do. Or still would be a 1.5 million below our 10% ending fund balance, ending fund balance policy next year. And we would still had a $1.1 million structural deficit that we are working on as well. So we need to come up with additional scenarios to balance that, that updated forecast. So what, one thing I wanted to mention here was that all 17 colleges are going through this right now. So all, we're all doing the same exercise. And one thing that we've collectively talked about is that it's not, it doesn't sound good, but if, if you are disinvesting in higher education as a entire funding source, if the state is going to disinvest 5%, you really have no choice but to show that you're going to shift that burden onto our students, because that's the only way you could make that balance. You cannot just take deeper cuts if the state is disinvesting one of your legs or one of your three-legged stool branches there. So all 17 colleges are showing pretty dramatic scenarios of tuition and fee increases if they were to take that 5% reduction. So I think there's a collective, you'll see a lot of that happening with our peer colleges. We match that as well. And you can see in that second bullet, what that might look like for CCC is using a blend of different levers. If you were to increase tuition by 5% more than our normal 3% that we traditionally index to, that would be an 8% increase in tuition. If we increased as well the general student fee by $1 credit, and we also increased our once-per-term fee that we apply for college services from $30 to $45, that one actually hasn't been raised in, I believe, eight years. Doing something like that could generate your 1.35 million. So that's a, just giving an example of a blend of tuition and fee scenarios that you could use to get to that type of number that kind of goes across our different demographic of tuition and fees. And then again, recognizing that the college also needs to work through that $1.1 million structural budget reductions that we began, which could be eliminating services, positions, and programs. Okay, and the timeline for the state funding, key piece here is we're in that second dot, November, which is our initial forecast. The next key piece that happens is in February, we begin the short session. The legislature begins a short session. That's also when the Economist does the next update to the forecast, the very first week of February. And then it's a 35-day short session, and we would hope that we start getting a sense of what our CCSF funding would be by the end of that short session. So that's the timing we're looking at. And then we would come in in April and present that updated forecast based on those known pieces at that time. And so that's the forecast. I'll move it over to Christie for the budget.
Hi, thank you, Jeff. Christie Owen, Dean of Business Services. And we will go over quickly, because I can see we are starting to approach into our seven o'clock meeting time. So I will be working through these and hopefully have a little bit of time for any conversation or follow-up. So with that, building a process with what we know now. You know, we're utilizing the best information that we have for college leadership this fall. We have a summary of how to pivot to react to a larger scale of the reductions. As Jeff walked us through, the process had been geared towards a smaller scale, less than 1% of our operating expenses is the $650,000. We now have to scale up, which means we need to pivot our approach. And that timeline is short. So we are utilizing the last of our one-time funds to resolve the shortfall by the end of June 26. These are the structural funds that were established to respond by pooling those various federal sources to recover from the economic downturn brought on by the pandemic. We're focusing on a process to have multiple scenarios and options to close this structural deficit. These options, if these revenues are in fact lowered by the state, we're working through the criteria and instructions for those reduction proposals. So that is actively happening right now, and that's what's going to be coming down the line. So hard to have a budget presentation without another chart of numbers. And this is, this chart is the why. This chart represents looking at those reduction scenarios and focusing on building fiscal stewardship and long-range financial planning now that we are transitioning off of the one-time funds. So as you can see, between 2022, 23, and 23, 20, I don't know what year I'm in, and 25, 26 is the last year of the sunsetting of those federal funds that have served their intended purpose. They were set up structurally to maintain those operations. If you recall, our employee retention credit was built around continuing service delivery at the levels that we had with the resources available. This measured spend-down was designed to sunset in 25, 26, and we no longer have those flexible resources to continue at a spend rate that is beyond what is forecasted to come in. And so when you start to get to, that is why you see the zero line in fiscal year 25, 26, that's when we are in balance of meeting our board policy with our revenues and expenses. With no action taken, we would start to deviate from that, and that is where the delta starts to grow and what would be our ending fund reserve and our ending contingency. The lowest point in the last several years that our funding balance and contingency has been, your operating contingency is in that like 7, 8 million dollar range. We are, we are now below that. Operating contingency in the general fund at present is less than $5 million. So that's when you start to think about, like, what are the corrective actions that would need to start to happen to bring that back into balance? So building scenarios. This is that variability and what we are seeing. So the, it's, it might feel like a simplistic equation. We have those revenues supporting our operations and our services. There's a whole series of things that happen in that incremental change, in that budget process. There are those increased costs, you have revenue scenarios to consider. You have service level cuts, those are a negative. And then you have any kind of central expense reduction. So anything less than a consumer price index or a current run rate of spending is a cost containment strategy. And so that's where we start to look at, how do we start to think about getting to the end target, which is balancing to that forecast on the life cycle of the forecast? I believe we're in a five-year, three, five-year?
Three-year.
Three-year forecast, so. But it is starting to build towards that, those long-range financial goals. So our budget calendar, budget calendar largely does look the same, because a lot of the same things and milestones are either set in Oregon revised statute or they generally tend to happen. This fall, the process improvement work that has been tasked out for the, those glide paths that is happening and results from that will be coming back. We are establishing reduction criteria for working through additional scenario modeling. In December, we'll come back to you with budget principles. This is, again, this is a process that we bring forward every year to set a calendar more officially and to have the principles of, of delivery for financial and budgetary guidelines from the board. By the time we're into that January and March, those reduction options are being identified, and the feedback loop works through our budget advisory subgroup. We also bring to you in February and March, your tuition and fees come for the board. The timing for this is because of having those fees and tuition established prior to the enrollment for our summer term. So, so that is where that one action tends to come in before we get to the more public or proposed budget phase. And then we work through the public processes that happen with our budget committee and our board adopted budget. So I know that was a lot of information, and we have discussion and questions.
I have a question. Oh, explain again the budget advisory subgroup.
Well, it's, we have a, we have Finance Council, which is part of our shared governance process. And the budget advisory subgroup is a subgroup that we created of additional members. So it includes both our Finance Council members plus the additional equal amount of members on the budget advisory subgroup. So I believe, I'm not sure I can recall how many, it's about 20 folks in total between the two of them, give or take. So it's, it's around that many folks, so we have our Finance Council plus those folks. We established it last year, last, I think it was January of last year, that we used an application process, we gave it out to all staff, allowed them to apply. And then Co-Chair Mark Yanata actually used one of his math wheel, random wheel models to choose those members from around the college community randomly. So that became our budget advisory subgroup to help just provide feedback on budget proposals as we bring those to the Finance Council and that additional group of folks.
Great, thank you. That's good.
Vice President Schaefer, I've got a couple of questions. First of all, just for clarity, I'm presuming that the discussion that we're having now is in addition to the deficits that we're now trying to overcome, right? The $3 million bucks that we're currently challenged with, right? As we move forward, and you've talked about these scenarios or these planning, you know, situations that you're looking at, right? Particularly the one that we're looking at is 0% COLA. Who ultimately makes that decision and how does that get done? And then, and then, you know, without the obvious question, which is one of, there are lots of ramifications to that, right?
Yeah, I would say that's, like I mentioned in the bullet, we would bargain in good faith, and we would see where the bargaining lands. At this point, we're using that as a baseline assumption, because we don't have it in contract yet.
And don't get me wrong, man, I'm not trying to put you on the spot per se. I mean, I understand these are very challenging, you know, discussions to have, essentially, right? But there, besides the numbers, there are a lot of other implications to things like that in this discussion, right?
Yep.
Are there any other questions?
Tough choices ahead.
That is correct. This is going to be another challenging year. We were really hoping to get to a spot last year where we would be looking at a structural correction to where we've been, and now we're kind of back at it again. But still hopeful, it's still achievable, and, you know, and today's update to the forecast for the state is always, at least it's a positive sign. So it's always nice when we see a positive out there.
I would just add a final comment to Rob. I mean, this, this isn't unexpected, it wasn't desired, obviously, right? But we talked about the fact that the first round that we took this year, right, essentially could be followed up by some additional cuts. And those next ones might hurt a little bit more, right?
Yeah, you really, you know, the environment, the one thing that's constant around here is change. And it really is, there's always something new, a new impact that's happening and a new thing that you're responding to. So it really is hard to forecast for every, everything that's out there.
Any other questions? Thank you, Vice President.
Thank you.
Schaefer and Dean. Next, we have Ashley Sears to do with us about, to talk with us about data reporting. My name.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here just to introduce Ashley and then I'll sit next to her and provide moral support.
Yeah, rah rah, go team.
I think you all know Ashley Sears is the Director of Institutional Research and Reporting and Applied Information Technology. Um, and just a little bit of context for what she's going to provide. Uh, she is now a member of the Provost, which is me, uh, Leadership Team. Um, and that is because we are trying to continue highlighting uh, and data and making data-informed decisions. And so, um, Ashley's been doing great work in the past, is continuing to do that, including, as you'll see, ongoing work gathering data about our students, but also making that data much more available to a wider audience at the college and thinking through a cadence of regular reporting to this group and other groups at the college so that, um, we're used to seeing data and used to thinking about data when we think about the future of the college. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ashley.
Thank you. Nice. And Katie's just pulling up the, uh, presentation. So today I'm going to talk to you about a couple of different things. The first one will be about some key student information that we know, some, some demographics. And also another piece, I, I kind of refer to it as institutional factors. So how many credits are students taking? Are they in their first term? It's not really demographics, but they really have a lot to do with how students experience the institution. You can go to the next page, please, Katie. Thank you. Um, and then I'll talk about some new insights, I'll say new-ish insights. Um, so over the last about year and a half, we've collected a lot of data that I'm going to share. We've been doing it for a lot longer than that, but I'll include about the last year and a half of information we've learned in student surveys. So there's some new information there and then highlighting a couple of things that we're working on right now. The survey is open right now for students. Um, so I'll give a little bit of a teaser about what's in there. And then we'll talk about the student metrics and sharing cadence that, uh, David mentioned, what we're going to be sharing with you and when and kind of what those pieces are. And then the last piece is the Data Den, which is our new business intelligence location. We just, I think our last training for employees is tomorrow. Um, and we did a presentation at a conference last week and people were very excited. They're already knocking our door down to get more information from us. Um, so that's what we're going to cover tonight. Thanks, Katie. So first, the key student information, if you can continue. This is small on here, but you do have a PDF of this. This is actually one of the dashboards in our new Data Den. Um, this has some key student information. This one is called our Student Snapshot. We have snapshots and we have explorers and snapshots are that quick view. I just have a high-level question, give me the data right now, maybe I'm heading into a meeting. Um, and then the other ones, explorers are for more deep dive questions. And that's how we've named them, uh, for employees. So this, what you're seeing on your screen is, uh, summer and fall student demographics and institutional factors. And then a little bit of a comparison to where we were last summer and fall. So we're having, uh, slightly less partially online students. So we classify students into fully online, fully in person, or some combination of the two, or they're taking a hybrid course. So we're, we're seeing a little bit less of that partially online. We're still kind of after the pandemic settling into what our new normal is. I expect it'll probably just go up and down here or there, depending on what classes are offered and what specific students. But it did, um, go down that partially online to about 5% and a little bit more of just the fully online or the fully in-person students. We have slightly less full-time students, we're about 3% down from last summer and fall. And then slightly younger, we have a little bit more in that 18 to 21 range and then also the 22 to 29 range. So a little bit younger, but not very much. Usually these demographics are pretty stable over time. We have seen more first-generation students over the last five, six years, and that's been kind of steadily increasing. And we're kind of sitting and waiting where we're going to land with enrollments for this term. Um, our high school enrollments will finish hitting by this Monday, and then we'll have a better idea of where we're really sitting for fall. That's kind of a little bit where we are with some key student information. And next we'll go to some new or new-ish insights that we have from surveys. So by new-ish, we're going back to spring term 2024. This was in a presentation maybe two years ago when I came to the board, but we've collected some information on food insecurity and also on housing insecurity. So I'm going to kind of hit both of those. So for food insecurity, to note that this, the food insecurity and housing insecurity questions are only shown to students who are 18 or older when the survey launches. Um, this is showing that we have 62% of our students were food secure. So that means if I'm mathing correctly, 38% were not food secure. As a little bit of a comparison, the most recently available data from the US, at the US level is 87% of households are food secure. And so we're at 62. That is quite a bit lower. And then for our, 17% of our students reported they were very low food security. And when we did this survey back in 2019, it was part of a larger study through the Hope Center. It was called the Real College Survey. So our food secure rate, that 62% was actually exactly the same, which was, I double-checked that multiple times, like really 62 and still 62? Um, usually something changes. And then we do have, um, lower rates of the very low food security. We're 6% lower, so that's great to see. So we do disaggregate every single survey question, which is why it takes a little while to get the results. Um, but we did see that there's higher levels of food insecurity amongst populations that we would kind of expect would have higher levels of food insecurity. So those include first-generation students, interestingly, students in their first term. Also, interestingly, higher credit load students are more likely to be food insecure. Also, low-income students, which is not a surprise, and students of color, unfortunately. So there are these groups, some we expected, some we didn't. Um, so we're just seeing a, a little bit less of the very low food security and then about the same where we were back when we did the Hope Survey in 2019. Right, and then for housing insecurity and homelessness, that is the language used in this survey. This is also, um, a federal survey, the questions that were taken from the housing insecurity. This chart shows you, um, the gray bar on the bottom of each of those clusters is all students together. And then two groups that we noticed had some pretty significant differences were, uh, parents and guardians, which is that top bar in blue, and then the yellow, which is the low-income students. They had some, quite a few that are sticking much farther out than the overall student population. And this again was only shown to students who are 18 years of age or older at the time the survey launched. Um, so 52% of our students were housing insecure. So they're considered housing insecure if they endorse any of these items. So for example, did you leave your household because you felt unsafe? Have you lived with others beyond the expected capacity of the house or apartment? So if they, if they said yes to any of those, or they moved three or more times in a year, they're considered housing insecure. So that's 52% of our students. This was 47%, so a little bit lower, um, when we did this survey in 2019. Um, and then for housing insecurity for our students, the, the most common reason why students were classified as housing insecure was because they had difficulty paying rent or their mortgage. And 16% of our students were homeless. Um, when we did this survey in 2019, that was 19%. So it's a little bit lower, but within the margin of error, so likely no change there. Uh, the disaggregation on this was quite complex because there were different questions that different student populations struggled with more than that. There wasn't a clear, like, all of these types of students tend to have higher housing insecurity or all of these students tend to have lower homelessness rates. It was, this specific item was more difficult for this group, but these ones they actually do better on. So it really depended on the different group that we were looking at. Um, but interestingly, when I was looking at, um, parent students, they had higher housing insecurity. Um, so mostly it's not being able to pay rent or mortgage, but they were not more likely to be homeless. So that was good when there's kids involved. And then, like I said, the race and ethnicity, when I disaggregated by that, there were just so many differences between groups. It wasn't clear that one group was struggling kind of overall more than everybody else. That's our housing insecurity. And then we'll move on to what we're asking, what we just asked in the spring. This is related to our holistic student support strategic priority. The strategic indicator is students' ease of access to services is improved. So I worked with the, um, actually for each of these sub, uh, subcategories, these subsurveys that we do, I work with different, uh, groups across the college to see, are we asking timely things? Are we getting the information that we need? What are the issues that are bubbling to the surface across the college so that we can kind of get as timely data as we can? So this one, um, we have, uh, one of our shared governance councils is shepherding the strategic priority. So I worked with them to figure out, how are we going to figure out if students are able to access services? And so we took a two-part approach. This is a mixed methods, uh, research project. And we started by trying to get a broad understanding of, is it, is it difficult or hard to access services? And then we asked some open-ended questions, asking students, what do you mean by ease of access to services? What does it mean for something to be easy for our students? Instead of us saying, we think that ease of access means X, we wanted to get their input on that. So we analyzed those text responses and we came up with some key things that were really common for our students to say. So services being available online is very important to them. Being able to navigate our systems easily is also important. Staff being responsive, and then our hours of operation. Those were the things that really came out, um, repeatedly from students. Really, 71% of students are saying that they do generally find accessing our student services to be very or somewhat easy. That's, we were really happy to see 71%. And so we're doing a follow-up survey now. This is this mixed methods piece where we've taken items related to what the students were saying about those four gray boxes. And we're asking them quantitative questions so we can see, are any of these a bigger issue than others? So we kind of have this broad idea of what they want us to prioritize. And now we're trying to quantify if we have any issues in any specific areas. Um, so that's in the survey right now, uh, in this. So we'll have those results, um, in about mid-January. And then the other piece that we did in, uh, spring was we asked students about how difficult it is for them to choose their courses. And 63% of students were saying they were confident in the courses that they chose. And over half of them spoke with an advisor or a navigator. Um, so 63 were very confident in their course choices and 31% were somewhat confident. That's a total of 94%. That's higher than I think maybe we thought or we're hoping for. 94 is very, very high for maybe anything. So they're finding that selecting courses is easy. Um, they're utilizing our advisors and navigators, they're using the resources that we provide in student planning and looking at the course schedule and catalog. So they're really feeling like they're getting what they need for the most part for course selection. We also dug really deep, we like, we like to go deep in the weeds in these, asking students about specific things. Um, if you weren't, if, if it was difficult, did you not get the courses you wanted? If you didn't get the courses you wanted, what impact did that have on your academic progress? Did you have to delay? Did you have to switch to something you didn't want? Did you have to take a modality you didn't want? Just trying to, are there, were there courses that you were trying to take that were scheduled at the same time? And so we're trying to find out if there are any of those issues happening for students. And for the most part, the, the amount of students reporting those were very, very small, like a hand, like a handful, less than, less than a dozen. So that was great to see. All right, now we get to the part where we talk about sharing data with you all. So what we have mocked up is that we, we understand that the board has a lot of different responsibilities. And a few of those are mission fulfillment, budget approval, and then accountability to the public. So in order to achieve those things, what we are recommending, um, and what we are planning to do over this next year is for quarterly for you all to receive enrollment statistics. This is what you, you get right now. So termly reports of FTE, headcount, enrollment, and that includes a five-year trend. So we're converting that into Power BI, so it's a little bit easier for us to pull, um, but that will continue. And then annually, providing a student characteristics and achievement report. You do get one right now, but this will be a little bit more expanded and it'll include what we're, we talk about momentum metrics. So we talk about students making progress, accumulating credits, getting awards, transferring, and looking at those breakdowns by different student characteristics or demographics. So we'll have a little bit more of that. We're developing a really fancy dashboard internally and we'll be able to share some, some images and information from those dashboards. We also will include a peer benchmarking report. This is a requirement from our accreditor NWCCU. I know Anne Anis will be talking a little bit about NWCCU and accreditation later tonight. Um, we have a set of benchmark institutions, two of them are aspirational and the remaining ones are ones we think of more as peers. Um, so those are key, it's, this is a consternation amongst the institutional researchers across everywhere, trying to get disaggregated data for peer institutions that's really meaningful. We do use our iPads data. It's kind of, it feels a little like maybe these aren't the metrics we would choose, but it's the only data that is available for all institutions. So that's what most people are going with. And the last piece is the key survey findings. So something similar to what you're hearing tonight of, these are some things that we're learning from students. This is what we're going to be digging into next, so you kind of know where we're at and, and what we're learning from our students in a more qualitative way. It's not just about how many credits are counting students. Questions or comments on this one? All right, all right. All right, and then the last piece that I want to talk about is the Data Den, which is so cute because we're the Cougars. Thanks, Katie. Um, this, I think we'll have to send this out as a video later. This is, was originally a video that shows this is an interactive dashboard. So I'll just kind of describe how it works. This is our Enrollment Explorer. I talked about the difference between a snapshot, which is a high-level, and explorer where you can dig way farther into the weeds than maybe you need to, but you find fun and exciting things. Um, so this allows students and the, uh, employees only, in the top left, they can pick which metric they want. So this one has credits, enrollment, FTE, headcount, and reimbursement. They can select which term they want to look at. And then that chart shows trending information for five academic years to see what that looked like week to week. This really helps us find things like, hmm, this program isn't enrolling students. There, this happened way earlier last time, maybe there's a delay for some reason. Or, ooh, we're not getting as many first-term students. And we can see that way before the term starts. We start, depending on which term it is, like fall term, we start, um, registration 18 weeks before the term starts. We have quite some, some lead to see what some of these metrics are. We can dig in by if they're a first-term student, we can look at just high school or we can exclude high school if we want to just focus on non-high school students. Um, we can look by program, we can look by groupings of types of courses, like CTE courses, for example. So this is really helpful for deans, for department chairs, for people who are working with students to understand the shifting population over time. This is, I wish we had a video, um, right now, but we, this, when you hover over the lines, you can see, um, that little tool tips pop up and shows trending, it shows you all of the details and percent changes. Um, the way that we've designed all of these dashboards is, um, in the top right corner, there's documentation. There's a little, uh, magnifying glass. You can go to a lookup if you're not sure what something means in the dashboard. So we've done, and we have done some testing, some UX testing with employees and some training. And people are very excited and in there digging around. Uh, and that is what I have for you tonight. Questions? Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I forgot my button. Tim got me a rad button and I accidentally left it on my desk.
Any questions?
Uh, I have some questions and maybe a comment. First of all, my comment, um, you know, when you come to organizations and you want to know how to make improvements and, and how to set yourself up for the future, information is king, right? I mean, the numbers don't lie, right? And, and that's the power of it. And really, beyond just the, the snapshot, as you pointed out, right? These trends are really important, right? So when you're looking at really how you're performing, you have to look at historical data, right?
Right.
And we're getting far enough away from the pandemic into the new norm of what we are today, right? Post-pandemic or something, right? Then we can see what's really happening to us as, as part of that, right? Then we can see what's really happening to us as, as part of that, right? I'm, you know, I'm surprised that maybe some of the, the numbers that we have in here, and they're always surprising once you get the facts in front of you, right? Which are always important in here, right? But I'm glad to see the wide variety of race and ethnicity that is at the college. I mean, that has begun a huge focus for us. And it appears to bear out to the people that we have in terms of the people that we serve, right? As students and obviously we've seen that as well with our faculty, right? So, so kudos to, to, to this institution for that as a priority. But boy, when you look at the housing insecurity and future insecurity numbers, you, you gotta, you gotta go home and cry, don't you? Right? I mean, you gotta shed a tear for how difficult it must be to be some of those students, right? And as we talked about, it's not just the ramen anymore. That was Tim's message when we talked about this. And it wasn't Tim running around, it was really about this, right? Wasn't it? And just how important that is. And really, you know, coming together to try to solve that problem, the work that the foundation is doing, putting more money together to make this all happen. It appears though, this is going to be a gigantic problem for us, right? And, and we don't see the trends. And so the question will become, is this becoming better or worse? Or how this is playing out for us, right? You can only guess in the current situation of the economy that it can't be getting better, right? It's part of that process, right? So as we look to solve the problems that Jeff was talking about earlier, and we talked about putting, you know, higher tuition onto our students, you can only imagine what the impacts may be potentially on enrollment and other things, right? So you start putting these pieces together, you go, uh-oh, right? We've got, we've got some work cut out for us, right? But anyway, like I said, the point of all this, without going on any further, is the facts are in the numbers. And if you pay attention to it, you can find out a lot about yourself in here, right? And about what you may do, right? And what the consequences of that might be, right? So, so thank you very much, right? I think this will become, this may become one of the more powerful tools we have in our hands.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. Under the Pell grant recipients, the thirty percent are Pell grant recipients and the rest are, seventy percent are no. Does that include full-time students or students taking one class at a time and paying out of pocket?
It includes, so this is already limited right now. It excludes high school students, it excludes community education students and workshop students. And so this includes everybody else. And so we, we do know that many of our students do not file a FAFSA. Many, many. And one of the things that my office does is monitors publications and things that people are finding out about their students. And so an example that is included in the fall survey is asking students why they don't file a FAFSA. Because there has, there, in the research, it shows that a lot of students don't think they would be eligible, even though they have other criteria. And the two criteria we included are, could you handle an unexpected $500 expense in the next thirty days? And then also, are you eligible for any federal or other benefits? And we list, you know, SNAP and TANF and all of those types of benefits. And so we will hopefully see why some of our students are not applying. We purposefully did not ask about their immigration status, which is another reason why they might think they're not eligible. But they may be eligible for Oregon State Aid, the ORSA. So we are asking those questions to try to understand why, but for a lot of this is they're not filing a FAFSA.
If I can follow up on that too, because this, this was something that a few years back really surprised me. I would have expected our numbers to be higher too, so that thirty percent's been somewhat consistent, I believe, as well.
Yep.
Part of it is, you know, you, you have to be at least a half-time student too to qualify for, for Pell. And so many of our students are part-time that that, that impacts those numbers as we look at that too. So they, the new workforce Pell that's coming out this summer for really, really short-term programs may help some of that. But, but to your point, there's some education as well about getting, getting folks to apply for the FAFSA in general. But yeah, we, we could get much higher on that.
Any other questions? Comments?
If I can make a general one too, sorry. I, I do want to thank Ashley and, and everyone who's really helped put this together. This has been a long time coming and it's, you know, the, the Data Den is, is, as Director Hathor pointed out, really powerful. If anything, I would, what I'd say to the board is we have access to a lot of information, a lot of data. What, what will help us as you, you know, you go along, if there are things that you want to know that you're curious about, to shoot an email so that we can get that for you. Because what we, you know, I, I'll own this, I guess what I struggle with sometimes is how much to give you, what specifically to give you so that, you know, you're, you're getting what you need. And because there's quite a bit that we have, you know, at our, at our fingertips, so to speak on that. It is, it does provide a pretty powerful message, but really kudos on, on making it so, so accessible.
Thank you very much, Ashley.
And my team.
And your team, thank you.
Not at this time.
Not at this time.
You know, that's something that you wanted to get access to. It's, it's an internal, you have to get into our internal software, but we could, we could work with that on that if you wanted to get access to it.
Data Den sounds so fantastic. So I'm looking forward to it.
We are the Cougars.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. This work session is adjourned. So Katie, what time is it? Seven-thirty? Well, we need about five minutes for our staff to take a quick one. Okay. Let's take a five minutes, yes. So we'll start up again in five minutes. All right, you. I will now call the Clackamas Community College Board of Education Regular Meeting to Order. Thank you. Today is Wednesday, November nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, around seven-thirty-eight PM. Katie, will you please call the room?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Position number seven, representing Camby and Malala, Irene Konev.
Here.
Position number six, representing Estacada and Colton, Jane Reed. Position number five, representing Westland and Wilsonville, Ryan Ingersoll.
Here.
Position number three, representing Gladstone and Johnson City, Wade Hathorn.
Here.
Position number two, representing Clackamas and Happy Valley, Rob Wheeler.
Here.
We have a vacancy for position number one in Milwaukee. Position number four, representing Oregon City, and our Chair, Josephine Jo Crenshaw.
I'm here.
Ryan, would you please read the labor and land acknowledgement?
Yes, the labor acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the foundation and wealth of the United States was built upon the forced labor of enslaved African people and voluntary and trafficked indigenous labor and the often exploited labor of immigrant, domestic, domestic and farm workers. Their vital contributions and resilience in spite of violence, terror, tactics, and bloodshed are integral to understanding our nation's past, present, and hope for what's to come. The prosperity many enjoy today is rooted in centuries of labor extracted under conditions of injustice, inequality, and ongoing systemic oppression. Acknowledging this truth is a step toward honoring those who were denied justice and toward creating a future that is more equitable, inclusive, and humane. The land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the Clackamas Community College campuses reside on the traditional homelands of, of the Clackamas, Cascades, and Tumwater bands of Chinooks, as well as the Tuolotin and Pudding River bands of Kaipuya and the Northern Malala people. They lived and prospered by maintaining strong cultural ties to the land and through wise management of resources. The signers of the Willamette Valley Treaty of eighteen-fifty-five, they were removed from their homelands to the Grand Ronde Indian Reservation, where they became members of the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ronde. Please join us in taking this opportunity to thank and honor the original caretakers of this land, their lives, and their descendants that live on as tribal members today, still carrying on the traditions and cultures of their ancestors.
Thank you, Ryan. Public comments. The Clackamas Community College Board of Education welcomes community members to attend board meetings to become acquainted with the programs and operations of the college district. Members of the public are encouraged to share their comments with the board during the agenda labeled "Public Comments." Comments from the audience at any other time during the meeting, except for the agenda item "Public Comments," will be declared out of order. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Katie, do we have any?
We do not, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Tonight, consent agenda consists of the following items. Approval of our minutes, work and work and regular sessions of ten fifteen twenty-twenty-five, acceptance of monthly financial reports, personnel reports, BUN update, and two D, summer enrollment. Does anyone wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
No, I, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Items one A through two D. We will vote by acclamation. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. Are there any abstentions? Please state for the record. The motion passes. New business. Resolution number R-two-five slash two-six dash seventeen, amending the Opsas architecture LLP contract in the amount of four million nine hundred and forty thousand and four hundred and twenty-four dollars for design services for natural resources. Center of Excellence. Under the new business, we have the resolution number R-two-five twenty-six dash seventeen, amending. I would like to invite Vice President Jeff Schaefer, Dean Ron Prince, and owner, rep Dale Kukendall to please come forward and present this item. You guys are already here.
All right, well, thank you for having us. We're gonna, we have a couple contracts we're gonna update you on. I'll let Dale give the, the specifics on the first one here, so if you want to give us this.
Certainly. First is the Opsas architecture contract. They were selected through a competitive RFP process earlier in the summer. And their initial contract was to get us through the programming phase, which is now concluding, and we're shifting into what's called schematic design. The completion of the programming phase allowed us to negotiate an appropriate fee for the balance of the, of the work, which is about a year more of design, plus the management of the actual construction for another year and a quarter or so. So the project goes clear out into the end of twenty-seven, early, early twenty-eight overall. And this architecture contract value was successfully negotiated. Ron was involved in those meetings, as was I. And we worked closely with Opsas, John Shorb and Lauren as well. So we're here to ask for approval of the contract as presented.
Any questions?
No, I think you missed a piece, no, I'm just kidding, right? That's quite, that's quite the change order, right? From just shy of three hundred thousand to five-point-two million. Oopsie. No, the only, the only thing I noticed by optics, and I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm, I've seen this before, but it's interesting, right? When you read the actual scope pieces, the second largest subcontracting piece of that goes to Walker Macy for landscaping, right? Isn't this a landscaping building? No, I'm just kidding, right? So I hope though that students are involved, that's one of the things we talked about, right? For the purpose, that, that the Opsas and the CMGC take advantage of those students, right? When I say take advantage of their skill, knowledge, expertise, and availability to integrate them as part of their learning, right? To, to put advantage to that program, right?
That is the intent. And to date, the department, departments have been deeply involved. And as we get going a little further, there'll be students involved in design and construction processes. And as we get going a little further, there'll be students involved in design and construction processes.
Any other questions?
This says first read, so you're looking for approval tonight? Should be, it may be a mistake. These should be action items.
Yeah, you don't need a second read for a resolution for this, yeah.
It's first read, first read.
Well, I'm going to take a motion.
I believe you can.
Yes.
Um, I think six seventeen, and then the Opsis Architecture contract, we found a four million nine hundred thousand dollars for design services.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ed. So you stay right there. Don't leave.
Opsis will be here. Can I just say that that was a very impressive piece that we received.
Our next item is Resolution Number R two five two six dash eighteen. This is contracting with Swinerton Builders for pre-construction and C M slash G C Services for Construction of the Natural Resources Center of Excellence in R C E.
Well, thank you again. This one is, I'll, I'll set this one up. It's a little bit unusual. It's actually under our thresholds for bringing it to the board, but we decided to bring it to the board because it's a big commitment. This is a thirty-eight million dollar ultimate contract. We haven't got that contract written, but this is that initial work that we need to do with Swinerton to get them on the team, working with the architects, so they can be in that room, working with us. So really, it's a small contract that we're working on right now that's being approved by the board, but it's really part of the larger contract. We'll be coming back in various pieces of this project, as pieces come back that are over that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold. But we did want to bring this to the board, just because it is exciting to let you know who we selected out of a pretty intensive R F P process with fourteen folks that were submitted and a long process. Thank you, Director Hawthorne, for coming and doing the process with us. It was good to have a board member there to be with us through that process as well. So I don't know, if you have anything else to add with that? I think that's pretty much, I think it's really just this initial setup worth work with Swinerton on the project. At this point, we'll be bringing those subsequent pieces back.
Swinerton along the way will be providing, they're describing it as a continuous estimating process. When new ideas are developed, they will help us evaluate the price effects right away and schedule and durability and all those important factors. They can provide really quick feedback, which will keep the process moving efficiently. They'll also help us watch for market challenges like tariffs or availability or labor or any of the impacts that can cause cost or schedule delays along the way. Am I not getting close enough? I'm sorry. Anyway, we're excited to have them on the team. We're having a kickoff meeting with them late this week, where we'll talk about roles and responsibilities and processes and all that, and get this project kicked off.
I I just wanted to note that I was really impressed when looking at the proposal, their whole approach to student success. They've put in a number of things there that just look wonderful. An onsite learning lab, faculty-led site walks, I mean, guest lectures and panel discussions, and then these three internships for C C C students in a C N C Technician Intern, a Field Engineer Intern, and a Pre-Construction Intern. That is exciting stuff.
Yeah, Director Reed actually was just gonna comment on that, so nice, nice job for catching that detail.
You could give it more details.
I know Vice Chair Hawthorne mentioned that, you know, he wanted to make sure students were involved in that very thing that Swinerton had put in their, in their proposal was definitely something that helped us make the decision easier.
It wasn't much easier read than that contract, by the way.
I just want to enter in for the record that I was involved in the process, but I did not participate in the actual selection of this contractor. I believe that it was a potential conflict of interest, and so I stepped away when they did the actual scoring, right? But I will say, now that the selection has been made, they picked the right group. That's who I would have selected. And I would have selected them, there were a number of really talented contractors that were interviewed. Out of the fourteen, they interviewed three. I was in, I did not score all of them. I did not look through their original proposals, you know, in terms of providing comment, but I did see them all and then sent it through the interviews. And there were some very impressive, it was a very difficult decision to make. There were some very talented contractors that showed up for this, right? But given the culture of this organization and its intent with this building, I do believe they picked the right C M G C for this work. Okay.
That's terrific. We were waiting to ask you, who was Swinerton? Why? But that's great to hear. Any other comments? Any other questions? Can I get a motion? To approve this resolution?
I move to approve the Resolution Number R twenty-five twenty-six eighteen, Contract with Swinerton Builders for Pre-Construction and C M G C Services for Construction of the Natural Resources Center of Excellence.
Second.
Let's have a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? There are no extension?
Oh, hold on, Chair Crenshaw, I believe that just for an ethics point of view, because I believe that this will pass without my vote, right, that I'm going to abstain. Okay, because I was involved in the process, but you don't need me. Okay. But I would have voted yes, anyway.
The motion passes. Thank you. Item number three on our list for today. Thank you, guys. I'm sorry. Item number three on our list, Oregon School Board Association, the O S B A election. Now we have the Oregon School Board Association election items. As a member of the Oregon School Board Association, the C C C Board of Education is eligible to participate in the election of officers to the O S B A Board and the Legislative Policy Committee, and to vote on resolutions such as those that amend the O S B A Constitution or adopt legislative priorities. Today, we are being asked to vote on three appointments. Let's take those one at a time. First, in the election of Christie, Chrissy Wrights to the O S B A Board of Directors in Position Number Eight. May I have a motion?
I motion to approve Chrissy Wrights.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to elect Chrissy Wrights to the O S B A Board of Directors in Position Number Eight. So let's vote. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those who oppose? Are there any abstentions? The motion passes. The next item in the election of, is the election of Heather Ray to the O S B A Legislative Policy Committee in Position Number Seven. May I have a motion, please?
I move to approve Heather Ray for the O S B A Policy Committee.
Yes. All those in favor, say aye.
We can go second.
Don't need a second.
I'll second.
I second.
Oh, that's why I said.
It's okay. You have a second from Rob.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 There are no extensions? All those?
You're done.
Please state for the record. The motion passes. All right, the last O S B A item is the election of Jenna Benogla to the O S B A Legislative Policy Committee in Position Number Eight. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Are there any extensions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? And we have no extensions. The motion passes.
Well, that works just for three months.
Yes, please.
Before we move on to the student faculty presentation, I just want to make a comment about these O S B A sections. Thanks for voting on those. The college used to be pretty involved with O S B A. I think probably directors, you know, Wheeler and Reed, whenever, remember that we used to have a board member that sat on the O S B A Board. You know, the O S B A is really focused mostly on K twelve, but community colleges are also members and I, we, anyway, we haven't been as closely aligned with them probably since pre-pandemic, right around that time. And I, last week, actually met with the executive director and just to kind of re-engage a little bit. And she asked me to pass on to all of you that there is a position open for Clackamas County for the position there. If there's anyone here that's interested in getting involved in that more and would look for opportunities for us to to be engaged with O S B A again. So I just wanted to pass that on.
Is that on their general board?
It's on their general board. Yeah, they don't have, they don't currently have a community college rep on their general board. And, and I'll just make a, make a statement. I think, I think that, I think we lose out collectively as community colleges not having a voice with, with that organization.
Thank you very much for the information. We're at position number nine. We now move to the student and faculty presentations. We have Title Two and English for Speakers of Other Languages Presentation. I would like to invite Dean Daniel Hoffman to please come forward and introduce our presenters.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. I have the opportunity to introduce two of our leaders within our AFAC Division. Stephanie Murphy is our Director of Adult Education. And, oh my gosh, Laura Joyce, I was gonna call you Lisa. Laura Joyce is our Program Chair for our E S O L Department. They are strong, compassionate student advocates and equity-minded leaders on our campus, and I'm looking forward for you to hear from them.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. Thanks. Okay, I'm here to share a bit about the WEOA Title Two Grant and the programs that we run as part of that grant. The Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act means we have a Title Two Grant that is focused on what we call the umbrella term of adult basic skills, our English for Speakers of Other Languages Program, or E S O L, G E D, Adult Basic Education, and Adult High School Diploma. This grant is essential to our college. It enables us to provide our adult learners in the community with foundational education, literacy, and language skills. Our E S O L, A B E, and Adult High School Diploma Programs help students skill up, thereby bolstering economic outcomes and creating resilient communities. We have robust enrollment. We have continued demand in our community. It's vital programming, and as you'll see, it's highly impactful. A bit on the financial piece for this past year. In twenty-four twenty-five, our award amount, this is again a federal grant, was four hundred and thirty thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars. That funding equates to about thirty percent of the E S O L and Skills Development Department's respective annual budgets. Those funds go toward instruction, staffing costs, and other, you know, administrative areas for the two departments. We do not charge tuition. We have course fees of thirty dollars or sixty dollars for our students to take these classes. As you can imagine, even that is at times a hardship for our students. So we have waivers and other levers that we can utilize to waive those costs for students. And then we braid funding. We leverage other grants such as Pathways to Opportunity, our G E D wraparound grant, Career Pathways for our I E T work, et cetera. All right, so some compelling data for you. For twenty-four twenty-five, we had one thousand and sixty students in our Adult Basic Skills Programs, which is pretty incredible. Three hundred and fifty-seven of those were on the G E D and A B E side of the house. Seven hundred and three were E S O L students. And you can see in this graph how we stack up compared to our peer institutions. So not too shabby, and again, a continued demand. We have a lot of folks coming through our doors, looking for access to our classes. Some disaggregated data here. I won't go through all of it line by line, but notably, you can see we have a large contingent of folks in that twenty-five to forty-four age range for our programs, and a large number of, excuse me, folks who identify as Hispanic or Latino. On the language front, we have a large number of Spanish speakers, but I think this is really compelling information just to show the rich linguistic diversity that we have in our E S O L program. Wanted to take a quick detour, just even though I'm here representing Title Two, we also have an amazing Spanish G E D program. It's not actually under Title Two, but I felt like we needed to make sure we called out that program because it's, it's well-known in our community. Camilo Sanchez, if you don't know him, you should. He's a tremendous advocate for the program and really has deep connections in our community. And last year, that program had three hundred and fourteen students, so that's another popular area for folks. This is a bit of shameless self-promotion, if you will allow me. So it's hard to read, but essentially, if you can see green, that green means good, or green means great, really. We have met or exceeded our state performance targets in almost every domain for basically the last three years. So that's great for us. I think it's proof of concept. I think it shows how amazing our instructional teams are and the support staff. It also factors into our performance-based funding model. So we're doing good work, and I think this, this slide shows that. And then on the, this is more so on the skills development side. This shows how many of our students in that same timeframe had what we call measurable skill gains in reading and math. That means they essentially moved up an educational functioning level. The number of individuals earning a G E D, getting their high school diploma. We also track people transitioning out of adult basic skills into college classes. What's not reflected here is that there are many others who move into the workforce and find gainful employment. So we're proud of the performance data as well. And just a last slide with a few miscellaneous points I wanted to make. We're the, we're the big game in town. We're the major E S O L provider in our area. We get referrals from ERCO, community-based organizations. We're part of Clackamas Work Source, and of course, word of mouth is, is big for us. Some high schools offer G E D options programs, so we don't have as many referrals from districts. We often get people who, if they're youth, have been, you know, released from high school. We're one of only two adult high school diploma programs in the state. U M Quah Community College is our peer in that work. And this program has gotten a lot more traction, so it's nice that we have a couple of options for students seeking their secondary credential. Last, but certainly not least, as I just really want to underscore how incredible our students are, they are resilient and determined, oftentimes coming from pretty disenfranchised or vulnerable populations. with some compounding impacts. And they keep showing up. They're looking to better their lives and continue their education and find work or continue their work. And I'm incredibly proud to be part of this program. So with that, I'll turn it over to my colleague Laura.
Thank you. So put the hand off. I'm also starting by expressing how proud we are. We're so proud of the good work that our ESOL students, faculty, and staff alike put in every term, the results of which are borne out in some of that Title II data that Stephanie shared. So I'd now like to speak to how our work in the ESOL department aligns with some of the college's strategic priorities through the voice of our students. So through some excerpts from some student testimonials. This summer, we started to gather these testimonials to provide to the CCC Foundation as they launched a campaign for funds to help ESOL students meet their needs. Huge thanks to them for that support. So if we can, oh, I have a clicker. That's okay. I got it. So I'll start with this focus on excellence in teaching and learning. So all of our ESOL instructors have at least a master's degree in TESOL, in Teaching English to Speakers of Other Languages. That means we're both content experts on the linguistic components of English, but we also have extensive training on teaching on teaching methods around language acquisition. So that means creating a learning environment that's infused with a lot of active participation and language production. So here is what some of our students have to say about that. I'm going to read it from here because I can't wait there. So one student has shared, "The incredible team of teachers brought their own energy and creativity to class, and together they created a place where we felt safe to try, to laugh, and to make mistakes without fear. I will never forget how they encouraged us to speak, even when we weren't sure of the words, and how they celebrated every small success as if it were their own. Because of them, every lesson felt special, full of patience, humor, and genuine care. Their support helped me believe in myself and enjoy the process of learning." And another student, Cassania, has shared, "For the first time in my life, I study in an interesting and fun way with a professional teaching staff, and this gives us real quick results. Learning English is difficult, especially as an adult, but our teachers see potential in us and we trust them. We read, write, and talk a lot, raising topics beyond just the classroom. We even sing." I actually have two slides here focused on holistic student support, thinking about how, what students gain with us responds to their needs, both their needs and their goals. And the first two quotes here really speak to how the English they learn in our classroom extends and is responsible to a variety of their needs outside of the classroom. So first, we have a student that shares, "Before studying here, I was shy and afraid to speak English in public. Now I can talk fluently with my children's teacher, make phone calls, and read books. I feel more part of my community now, and that makes me very proud." And David shares with us, "The first and most important thing for me is being able to understand. I work in construction, and every week we have a safety meeting. So if I don't understand them, I can have an accident. And the second is, I'm living here, and if I don't adapt, I'll be left behind in the labor market and socially. It helps to communicate with everyone." Next, there's a student that describes the support she received to meet an academic goal. When students are in our most advanced classes, they're offered tuition waivers into certain courses outside of our department to help facilitate their transition into certificate and degree programs. And so we have a student that states, "One of my best memories was near the end of the program when my writing teacher offered me and two other classmates a waiver for one of the college-level courses. I was excited because it was my first time taking a college-level class, and it was even more special because it was with native English-speaking students. That moment made me feel proud, motivated, and confident that I could continue my education." And now, this next, again, focus on holistic student support is focused on students that have met some academic goals. So this first student on the slide is a current CCC student, but he's in our Computer Science Program, expecting to graduate with his associates next academic year, and he hopes to transfer to Portland State University. So Tong has shared with us, "CCC has provided me with a strong academic foundation that allows me to accomplish educational goals and pursue my dream career. Whenever I have problems, I can schedule an appointment with a counselor or instructor to seek advice or guidance to stay on track with my goals. This year, I've been working as a math tutor. It gives me the opportunity to give back, support back to other students when they have difficulties in their studies. Seeing them reminds me of myself, how I overcame obstacles and accomplished certain goals thanks to the help and encouragement from the people at CCC." And we hear from Andre, who's currently a student at Portland State University. He shares, "This experience prepared me to transfer to a university. Now I'm trying to write a novel in English, which is a testament to the confidence and skills I gained." And lastly, Arya, "The ESOL program built my confidence in English, which prepared me to continue my studies. Because of that start, I was able to begin a bachelor's degree at Portland State University and later complete my Doctor of Pharmacy at Pacific University. Today, I am proud to be working as a licensed pharmacist and pharmacy manager. CCC helped me gain the language, academic, and personal skills I needed to achieve my professional goals and to contribute to my community and family with confidence." And the final strategic priority here is the one around diversity, equity, and inclusion. We sometimes find ourselves saying over in ESOL that our student population is just intrinsically diverse, right? They are all resident immigrant students. They are all English-language learners. So Cassania has shared with us, "Many of us have only just moved to America, but thanks to the college's comprehensive support, we don't feel out of place." Another student shares, "Learning the language also opened a window into American culture and gave me the ability to share Ukrainian culture with others, creating connections I value every day." And lastly, Kim shares with us, "What impresses me the most about CCC is no matter who you are, where you come from, how old you are, or what your nationality is, at CCC, you are given knowledge and opportunities if you reach out for them. Teachers and staff will help you whenever you need the support." So that's the final excerpt I have to share. The last slide here is our links to the full testimonials. So these are simply excerpts to the full testimonials that students wrote for us. We had given them three different prompts, and the links will take you to those full testimonials if you're interested in reading them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was so interesting. Are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments and maybe a question. I was really struck specifically by the comment about the parent being able to speak with their child's teacher fluently. And I was just thinking about the families that my students interact with as being a part of the dual-language program, where they're put in half Spanish-speaking native and half English-speaking. And we've, my family's even run into, like, the parents don't know how to speak English. We don't know how to speak Spanish. And so I was, I'm wondering, do you have, have there been any connections in particular, like in the Wilsonville campus for this? And how do those classes happen? Because I'm like, I kind of want to talk with our Family Empowerment Center and the school district to say, there's this great opportunity for parents who can learn English. So that, I was just really struck by that particular comment.
That's great, and I appreciate you bringing up that connection with the Wilsonville campus. I do know there are, through the Wilsonville School District, there are some community-based English classes happening through the school district on our Wilsonville campus. And so they are aware of our program. I think those are, those course, those community-based classes are beginning level, and they know that if they're interested in coming over to our academic program, we've made those connections. But there's definitely opportunity there to do that in a deeper way. Yeah.
And we have an outreach coordinator who works in adult basic skills, so I'll make note.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to help with those connections because I'm like, I'm seeing direct things that we could be expanding on, making more people know about it. So thank you so much for your work and making a huge impact on those families with significance. Thank you.
Question. Can you describe the adult high school diploma? And why only do two places do it, and what does it entail?
Yeah, I don't know why there aren't more who do it. We feel like the secret's out because we have been getting a lot of interest in that program. It's honestly, we look, it's based on like a credit threshold. So if they're at a certain number of credits, it might make sense for them to come back. And some people, I think, want the quicker route potentially and want to do the GED or have a prep class and take the test. We definitely get folks who take a lot of stock in like having the diploma. Like, I really want to get the actual diploma. And so then we work with them during the advising and intake to figure out, let's see how far back your credits were. What are you coming in with? We do sort of an analysis and figure out what might be the best pathway for them. But it's a terrific program. And again, the fact that there are so few, I'm not sure why, but there should be more because we get a lot of, a lot of interest, and it has a lot of traction.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to see if there's any others. You're very proud of your students, as you should be. We're very proud of the work that you do. And you know, I want the board to know when we've, you've been asking questions, we've been updating you on the federal impacts. And you know, last summer, there was a question about would these Title II funds be distributed? And you better believe that just caused like a ripple of like, wow, what does that mean? It just had such huge impacts for these programs and for the work that we do. And I want to give, thankfully, that didn't come to fruition. You know, those funds were passed through, but it's still something, I know Stephanie is in meetings with us regularly, really updating us on how these students are progressing and working through. And you know, we continue, and I think you heard it through these comments, that the one I really heard was the trust that they have in you. You know, we continue to get a number of students coming into these programs because of, because of the work that, and Kat's back in the back too, so I want to give Kat credit, that this team really does. And so it's fantastic. And I am just super proud of you, as you are of your students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Camp.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now it's time for our association reports. Please remember to keep them under three minutes. We don't have any hooks, but we can find a way to do it. Brianna, I know you have a report for us today. Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hello there.
All right. It has been a very eventful time for student government recently. Just today, we, well, okay, over the past few weeks, we've been evaluating our budget. And today, we came to the decision that we're going to cut back the amount of money that we're giving to clubs. Previously, we would give them 500 per term, but we've decided to give them 250 annually, and they will have the opportunity to request more funds from us in the future. We've always had the exception where they could ask for more money, but recently, we just realized we do not have the facilities in our budget to continue providing that much to the clubs while also operating student government in a, you know, responsible way. Our Clubs Department has been making a ton of improvements, though. They've been going over all of their old logs and things and getting up to date with all of the clubs and the paperwork that they've been putting off. We also finished our Clubs Workroom and Pantry Overflow space. So now clubs will have a specific place to do any things that they might want to, including meetings, while also having that extra pantry space that's kind of overflow in case we get too much of one particular thing. Our Multicultural Department has also been doing a bunch recently. Just a few weeks ago, I think, they had a Hispanic Heritage Event where they served food from different Hispanic vendors and served over 100 students. They also set up altars for Dia de los Muertos at all three campuses and had events here and at Harmony related to the event. They also have their ongoing book club, which I think is meeting tomorrow night. Also today, we hosted a Coffee and Concerns event in the Wachino Mall, which is where me and the other member of our executive team, Caitlin, our secretary, just sat out with a bunch of coffee, tea, hot chocolate, and then other random snacks for students to come, talk to us, talk about any concerns that they might be having, just ask questions so that we could help improve their experience at the college. A lot of our feedback was really good. Most people didn't have anything to say besides that they were having a good time. So that was awesome to hear. The only things that we did hear back from were the food pantry, but we're trying to compile like resources so that those people would have better opportunities revolving food security moving forward. Also, I've got two pages for this one. Okay, our Budget Committee has also, going back to our budget cuts, our Budget Committee has been meeting more frequently. We're trying to come up with new systems to kind of keep ourselves up to date on what's going on, considering that before we didn't have a very concrete idea of what our budget looked like. So right now, we're trying to get a better idea so that moving forward, we can make the best decisions for student government as a whole. We are also trying to make a new receipt tracking system to make life for our advisors a little easier. So they're happy about that. And then, oh, our advisor John also wanted to mention that recently, the food pantry every day has had lines out the door, which has been a little hard to keep up with. I remember it was just like last week. We had a huge order, the entire pantry was full, but by the time that I came back, the next day, it was empty. But at the same time, we have gotten more donations over the past month than we have in the entirety of last year. So it's kind of just difficult for us to maintain like, yes, we're getting a ton, but we always need more. So that's been affecting us recently. But other than that, just doing as many events as we can to support students right now, all of our departments are planning things at the moment. Our Community Wellness Center, they're planning a blood drive right now. So we're getting ready for that. Yeah, that's what we've been up to. Any questions?
You don't have any problems with the participation of the students to help?
In what category?
Such as getting food for the pantry, helping to?
Oh, we have, I think, well, yeah, we've been a little short-staffed recently with trying to get things caught up. Like today, I remember there was like two hours where we should have been open, but one of our food pantry workers was sick. So unfortunately, we were closed at that time. But other than that, for getting things stocked, people have been showing up like really early. The other day, me and three other people showed up at like 8:00 a.m. to stock the pantry before we opened. So that was good. Yeah.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
I have a question as well.
Yes.
Are you finding new donors that are contributing to the food pantry?
I think so, yeah. A lot of just people donating what they can. Like, not as many like big bulk donations, but like people will just give like 10 things of toothpaste or a big box of like canned goods. So we're just getting it wherever we can right now.
Yeah, thank you. Of course.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Brianna.
Of course.
Thank you very much. Our Classified President, Jennifer here. Here she is.
Hello.
Hello.
It's good to see everybody in person. It's been a minute since I've been able to make it. With that in mind, I'll try and keep it under three minutes, I swear. So since it's been a minute, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things that are important that Classified have been up to since the start of fall term. I think one of the most exciting things for me at the start of fall term is that at Fall in Service, we get to give out scholarships to some of our Classified members who are active and pursuing educational advancement for personal and/or professional reasons. And this year, we had five scholarships that we were able to give out to our members. The three funds that we grant people The three funds that we grant people scholarships from are the Classified Memorial Scholarship, the Curtis Pelham Endowment, and the Kevin Forni Memorial Scholarship. And these are all funds that were started by classified members or for classified members. And they benefit classified members who are pursuing education. So I just wanted to address that this year, we were able to present our member Elena Zylar with a scholarship from the Classified Memorial Scholarship Fund. We provided members Amber Steele and Melissa Dio with scholarships from the Kevin Forni Memorial Scholarship. And we were able to give members Ophelia Fernandez and TJ McDonough funds from the Curtis Pelham Endowment, which is pretty exciting for us. It's one of the best parts of the year. We additionally have our awesome VP, Adam Wickert. He's established a committee of dedicated classified members to try and improve and better define our scholarship program and hopefully eventually find ways to expand our funds and the way we offer people more money so that we can help each other out more. I don't know if very many people are aware of what awesome things our classified are doing outside of their full-time jobs, but we have people who are pursuing, you know, non-degree granting education. But we have members currently who are pursuing their associates, pursuing their bachelor's, pursuing their master's, and their PhDs. So we have a lot going on in addition to working full-time and having families and whatever the rest of us do. So it's pretty cool. Okay, then in October, we had five classified members go to OEA's Conference for Bargaining and Organizing. That was myself and Becky Torres, Adam Wickert, Amy Colafello, and William Burkhalter. And this year, the conference was centered around organizing for fully funded schools, which was really, it was a great conference, very educational and enlightening. And we spent some significant time talking about the problems being presented to us that we heard about just earlier, about the fact that the Oregon's tax code is linked to the federal tax structure. And there was a lot of discussion about how we as educators can organize to try and address these legislative issues and work to disconnect from pieces of that tax code to, you know, help maybe not solve the problem, but, you know, relieve some of the effects of it. Some of us also got to hear a presentation from the Oregon Center for Public Policy discussing the same issue in part at the OEA Community College Council meeting this month. And knowing that we are potentially facing these drastic cuts at this point is discouraging, it's disheartening, it's really scary. But sitting with members from an organization that is 41,000 members strong and are more or less all geared up to try and, you know, work together and take action in the face of this was very encouraging, very hope-building experience. So that, I think, is my three minutes. So I'll leave you with that, unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Jennifer.
All right.
You kept it under three minutes, Jennifer. Charlie. Charlie is president of the Full-Time Faculty Assistant. Thank you for being.
I promise I'll keep this under three minutes. Besides, I would really pity the poor person that tried to hook me off. So you might need a team of horses to pull me away, so. Great to see you all tonight. My name is Charlie Ledmire. I'm the Full-Time Faculty President. Only got a couple of, a couple of big line items for us here tonight. Matthew Warren from the English Department. In 2023, Students in the English Department Book Publishing Courses selected a poem, "Looking for America", written by Steve Deuch. I'm hoping I'm pronouncing that correctly. To be included in this year's volume of the Clackamas Library Review. Meanwhile, a professional composer, Martin Reuch, was commissioned by conductor Bruce Colia. Again, a lot of names here, I really. To write a piece for a chorus to be performed by the San Roman Valley Choral. After reading more than 200 poems, Marty came across Steve's poem in a Clackamas Library Review and sought permission to set the work to music. The core work premiered in April 2025, nearly two years after the poem was first published, and won Sacramento State's Festival of New American Music in the Core Category. National Music Prize for a piece of music that only existed because a poet wrote a poem and because students at CCC taking a book publishing class selected it for publication in our award-winning and internationally-read literary journal. How cool is that? David Batzner of Music Technology wanted to let everybody know that they had just installed a new large-format analog recording console for the, the the recording studio at the Oregon City Campus. Started officially installing on August 7th and finished installation of the console in September 23rd this year. They would like to invite you to please visit Nehmeyer and would love to give you a tour to introduce you to the exciting new development for the community. This particular piece of equipment is quite impressive. I'm just gonna go ahead and just hit some highlights here. This is an incredible piece of technology that we now have here at the college that is now available to our community. And this kind of is a really important thing for our students because now they have a direct link to things that are happening or that they're going to be experiencing in industry that a lot of colleges will not have or do not have access to. So this is really a very big deal. Having, having an opportunity to go over there and check it out, I think, would be really, really cool. And of course, this is now the centerpiece of the AAS degree here at Clackamas Community College. That's what I have for you tonight. Any questions, comments? No any good jokes, no any bad jokes. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Christopher here?
It's Christopher Allen.
All right, college reports. President?
Thank you, Chair. Just a few items tonight. Enrollment, you heard the report from Ashley earlier, and so I'll just say that for right now, the seventh, we're into the seventh week, or anyway, last week was in the seventh week, we're at up about 2.9%. So just about 3%. And again, that's pretty consistent with what our sister colleges are facing, but it's less than what we, what we anticipated. Our college's DEI Committee is going strong. They just gained 11 more new members from fall recruitment. Now there's 52 members and there, there's four subcommittees. Just today, they, they do something called snack and learn sessions. And today they had one out at talking about student resources like our Benefits Navigator, Student Support Council, Harmony Campus Student Services, Wachino Welcome Desk, and so on. They, they do a number of opportunities, educational opportunities for the campus. And it's, it's nice to see that so many people are involved in that, in addition to everything else they're doing. And then our LEAP Office, our Leadership Education Advocacy for Progress Office, along with our Shared Governance DEI Community Practice, has developed and delivered training sessions regarding managing difficult conversations and conflict in the workplace. It's true, we have those. We have difficult conversations. We have conflict in the workplace here, so it's good we have opportunities to talk about those. And, you know, this was addressing some of the information and heard through our employee climate survey results last year. And so we've had some good turnout for those as well. And then you are all very familiar with the Cougar Paws tool, and it's now been launched college-wide, including ongoing training about how to utilize the tool and then some drop-in sessions for practice on that. And sessions continued through fall term, and we'll have more of those winter term. I'm gonna borrow this from you. In front of you is a dragon and an invitation to see the theater production of She Kills Monsters. Our journalism instructor, gosh, why did her name just escape me? It was Chair of the Chair Over Music and Theater and Journalism. Say again?
Melissa.
Melissa Richardson. Thank you. It's very late. I can tell. Wanted to, to personally invite all of you, and so she, she made sure she, she got you all dragons. I will say, I saw it last Thursday. It's delightful. If you get a chance to see it, this is the last weekend. It's, it's really a lot of fun, so please take the time to do that. In addition to that, there's a student performance showcase this Saturday at 7:30 and that students have put together in the theater as well in Nehmeyer. On, and then upcoming here in a few weeks, just to get these on your radar, and I believe we have these on your calendar, if not, we will soon. There's a bond fair taking place December 15th from 4 to 6 in the Gregory Forum. And that's really, it's not like a traditional, what you'd think of as like, oh, come learn about the bond. It's really, we're inviting contractors, we're inviting small businesses, folks that may in the past have not necessarily known how to, how to do kind of an RFP or know how college processes work to really try to engage with potentially minority-owned businesses, women-owned businesses, small businesses locally in Clackamas County with our, you know, Swinerton, with our architect there for that building, but also other projects that we're doing around here at the college. So it's kind of an innovative approach to really welcome contractors and small businesses to get it more engaged with the work that we're doing around the bond. So if you want to come see that, that's gonna be December 15th from 4 to 6. As you know, we'll be closed for Thanksgiving next week, Thursday and Friday. And then that following, when we come back, December 2nd through the 5th, or the end of the quarter, music and choir concerts, which are each evening starting at 7 o'clock. And I know I've talked to you about those before, but if you want to see some great music, whether it's, you know, vocal, you know, choir performance, or, you know, band or jazz band and the rest, it's really a nice series of concerts. Each night you can see something there. Upcoming on the December 8th is the Oregon Business Leadership Summit. And I believe Joe and Rob are signed up for that with me as well to go to that. That's often, you know, many of you have been there before. It's an opportunity to really hear from the governor and others about what the priority is and how we can connect with businesses to hopefully move the state forward. And then our yearly Legislative Breakfast is coming up on Wednesday, December 10th at 7:30 AM. We've already got a number of acceptance notices from legislators. You are probably aware, maybe aware because of some changes and some unfortunate deaths in legislation that, or legislators, that we've got some new legislators that we'll have there as well. Opportunity to really advocate based on everything you've heard today about budget and challenges. I think it'll be really important that we, we are out in front of them. And then finally, we have our yearly Cal Academy All Staff Recognition Event coming up Thursday, December 11th, from 11 to 12:30 in the Osterman Theater in Nehmeyer. So lots happening here in the, just the last few weeks before, before the fall break or winter break and before we start and the rest. So any questions for me?
Are you still running?
I am still running. Not, you know, yes, still running. I, I did, did run a marathon a few weeks back and got another one coming up here after the, after the start of the year. So I'm still crazy enough to be out there. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Hi there. Clackamas College Education Foundation, Brian, please.
Yeah, the foundation has stepped up to help food pantries. Unfortunately, because of the government shutdown, it made an already tough situation for students much worse. And then over the last six weeks, close to $6,000 have been raised. The Cougar Community Campaign has wrapped up, and the foundation raised $42,638 for department and student support. And round two of the scholarship awarding is in full swing. Awarding will be completed by the end of the month, and award letters will be sent before the Thanksgiving holiday.
Thank you very much. Jane, do you have a report for us?
Yes. OCCA?
Yes.
I do. I'm gonna try to do the revenue forecast. A statement following that forecast. Sections of it too much, but the office of economic analysis now puts a 63.1 million dollar shot while which is a significant reduction from the previous forecast. They proposed this turnaround is given by a stronger.
Stronger corporate tax receipts and improved national economic expectations. While it's more optimistic, economists caution that risks remain, including a potential recession, a possible government shutdown, depending Supreme Court ruling on federal tariffs. So in response, OCC continues to urge lawmakers to protect funding for Oregon's 17 community colleges, which serve as essential infrastructure for workforce development and economic growth. It calls on lawmakers to prioritize community college funding in the 2026 legislative session, avoid cuts that would limit access to affordable education and workforce training, and recognize the role of community colleges in driving economic recovery and opportunity, especially in rural and underserved communities. OCC emphasizes that cuts in the second half of the biennium are especially difficult as colleges have already committed to program staffing and student services based on earlier funding levels. Mid-cycle reductions disrupt planning and directly impact students' access to affordable education and timely completion. So that's, that was a statement from Abby Lee, who is the Executive Director of OCC. That came out. Was that today or was that yesterday? It was either today or yesterday.
It was this morning.
This morning. Yeah, yeah. Also, this, this could be very timely too. Thursday, tomorrow, from 12 to 1, is a lunch and learn session, and they're talking about preparing for Oregon's 2026 budget landscape. John Wykoff, Deputy Director of OCC, Kim Toh, who is the Principal Legislative Analyst from the Legislative Fiscal Office, and Kyle Thomas, who is Director of Legislative and Policy Affairs from the HECC, will be there. So you can, there's Zoom information that you can get on OCC's website. So that is going on. And also, a great conference, OCC. We, we all, and it was wonderful because all of the board was able to be there. And a number of deans and staff and faculty and vice presidents and wonderful folks were able to be there. Was it Hood River? It was just a great event. To me, it is. I get to see these people from across the state that I've met over the years. We get to see all of the, all of the presidents from all 17 colleges. We get to hear presentations that are timely, and we get to learn what other schools are doing. It, anyway, I, I really liked it. I thought it was one of the better ones that they put on. So I, I won't say anymore because others might want to when they do their reports. So I think that's it for OCC. There's a meeting in, and Ryan is going to be, I'm, I'm going to be in California when we have our next quarterly meeting, but Ryan is going to go and represent us. That meeting is online, but yeah. So that's it.
No, I just wanted to add to Jane's comment about OCC because you forgot one very important event that took place. You might fill this in, Jane.
Would you like to share the two? Well, okay, we had a wonderful. Thank you very much. I was cutting this short. For the keynote address initially was given by Tim, and he talked all about details of, of the run. And it was excellent how, and Patty was there giving her side of thing. Lori was there doing about how it was produced. And so that was an excellent, it kicked off the conference. It was really one of the very first things that, that happened at the conference. So that was wonderful. And Dr. Cook received the Howard Cherry Reward for Administrator of the Year. And, yes. It was, it was a Tim Cook conference. It was wonderful. Yeah, thank you very much.
I feel better now.
Yeah. Probably have forgotten.
Well, I wanted to add that the presentations that Clackamas Community College put on at the conference were also truly amazing and really well done. This is a good time to be on the Clackamas Community College Board. I'm gonna be completely transparent about that because so many people were kind of looking to us as, I don't know, like, I don't even know what to call it because of Tim and, and all the work he's done and I think the way we keep showing up at these conferences. So well done, everybody. It was, it was an absolutely terrific conference, all because. conference, all because of all of you and Tim's leadership.
Yes.
Anyone else?
No, I would just add to Irene's comment. I mean, it, it was, it was really a, a reflection at OCCA of just how powerful the leadership is, and I'm talking about leadership, not the people we think of as leaders per se as their title, but I'm talking about the people everywhere in this campus and this institution, because it showed up there, right? There were people from Clackamas Community College everywhere, and we were talking about all kinds of stuff that they were doing. People wanted to know what was happening at Clackamas. It was a big deal, right? Yes, the light was shined because Tim was the star for a while, but nonetheless, really CCC shone its own light by itself too. It was really good, right?
The community was beating our drum.
Yeah, right? It was really good.
And I think that one of the real great things that I got out of it was the AI presentation. We're all in it. We don't know it, but we're all there.
And it is in us.
And it was, uh, it was so interesting, so we've been talking about that.
Yeah.
Best of the afternoon, so it was a great conference, and thank you, Tim. Thank you to the whole team and to the college because the light did shine on us.
Yeah, I, I echo a lot of those same comments. I think for me in particular, joining the board when I did and being able to be a part of these and learn and acclimate has been really helpful for me. I think a couple of things that I want to call out to the legislative conversation there was really helpful, kind of understanding that and the people that spoke in that. And then again, sort of interacting with um CCC staff in conversations while being there and other board members, I think was really helpful, and then engaging with others, I think, really helpful conference, and while we have some stormy waters ahead, um, and all of us do in a lot of ways across not just the education area, but all aspects, aspects of the state, I feel more confident that, you know, we can lean on each other and come up with innovative ideas and things to learn to say, how do we get through this and how do we keep serving our students um in really important and powerful ways, because that's why we're here. So that was fun and center.
Uh, nothing to add other than we ruled at that conference. Thanks to Jeff Schaefer, gave two budget presentations, and uh Christie Owen was there as well presenting. And uh, and Tim was the talk of the conference, so it was uh quite exciting to be a part of Clackamas Community College.
I just wanted to add from my external uh committee um appointments that we had a day of coming together on the Oregon Commission for Women, the um Asian Pacific Islander Commission, and all the other commissions that are um there to guide the state, and one of the things that we did is to kind of honor and hold space for us, for Aaron, who passed away, and other legislators that, that passed away in their service, and it was, it was a very move me, moving time just to kind of uplift the good work that Aaron did and, and how he served with us. Thank you.
If there is no further business?
I'm sorry, Chair, if you don't mind. I do have one more thing, and I apologize. I probably um should have shared this either sooner or whatnot, but today at five o'clock, the Zone One uh application deadline um hit at five today, so we have three applications at this point. And uh, I don't know if you want me to read the names of them or how you want to do that, but um unless I hear otherwise, I will move forward with scheduling interviews. Um, and we have those right now, tentatively, for sometime between December first and the third. We have previously done them virtually in the past, um, and then after that, we do uh vote and then hopefully have someone appointed prior to our December meeting, unless you wanted to um continue to extend the, or not continue, I guess we haven't yet, to extend the deadline to continue to receive other applications and um push this past the holiday and do interviews sometime in January. That's to the pleasure of the board, whatever they would like to do.
Since I won't make the decision for the board, I would like to ask the board, what do they think?
Well, I'd like to see who the three applicants are and their qualifications, right? Before deciding if we want more candidates. Maybe we don't have three viable candidates. I don't know, but I'd like to be able to evaluate that.
I can get those out to the board, and then uh we can have a different discussion and decision on that later.
Thank you, Katie. If there's no further business. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.